Okay, at this time I'll call the December eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen Dickinson County Commission Meeting to order. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on the agenda, we just have one item to add, and that would be to authorize any of the commissioners to come in if needed to sign any documents in regards to payroll or any licensing. And so, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the agenda with that one addition.
Second.
Yeah, the motion and the second for the amended agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item is the consent agenda. This includes the minutes of December eleventh work session and the regular meeting, payroll of three hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and three cents, wire payments of four thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars, fund expenditures of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and seven cents, abatements of eleven thousand, ninety-eight dollars and two cents, added tax, six thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-four cents.
I'm going to leave for the consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda, and I guess there's not any thing to set aside for discussion or question on that, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, Craig, we'll go ahead and start with you for commissioner comments.
Yeah, I attended the economic development, I don't really, the economic development, we had a meeting out at Michigan State Farmhouse yesterday with the mayor and Dave Dillner and some other people that were there, Brad and Janelle were there. I'll let Brad talk about more of his comments, but it's, one of the key issues was how do we as governing bodies leverage the stuff we have working together to improve the quality of life and business opportunities in Dickinson County? That's all I have. Thank you, Lynn.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, nothing on the computer.
Okay, we're done. First of the week, I did, they had a meeting with, on the farm, new farm program, the extension, Farm Service Agency and Farm Management Association kind of all went together and put this meeting on out at Sterling Hall, and it did bring a tremendous crowd of farmers in to listen to what the new farm program was going to be, and like I say, they kind of shared the speaking between the three areas there, so it will be, like I say, everybody will have a lot of decisions to make on. As usual, they make every program more complicated than last one, so that you've got way more decisions to make and way more guesses on which one to sign up for, so everybody is concerned about that. I did have, yesterday, down Junction City, the North Central Regional Juvenile Meeting, and we do have five members going off the board this year over there, just because of some of them that didn't run for reelection and some of them that got beat, so we're having quite a turnover with board members. One positive thing that I think we have accomplished this year is Sean did take the test and get qualified, that he can give the test for GED qualified students, and not only the ones that are in the facility, but also other students that like, have dropped out of school that want to get their GED, and he's qualified to do that as long as the parents consent for him to take the test, so I think that could be real beneficial for some students in this area, because apparently there's not a lot of places that are qualified with a testing person that can do that. As far as the budget, it looks like, like I say, we gained a little bit this year in our reserves, so things are running, like I say, smooth since Sling County came in and kind of made it more efficient, and actually, right now, they're not, they only had four, four there juveniles in detention. It's been kind of low numbers here the last few months, and they normally average around ten, so we're not sure whether word is getting back that we're strict over there and that the kids want to stay out of trouble and so they don't have to go over there, or just what the reason is for sure, but anyway, that's a good sign, I guess, that's about all I have.
Okay, thank you. This past week, I attended the Central Kansas Mental Health Board, and it is a regional board, and Sheila Biggs was elected to serve once again as chairman of that board, and she's done an excellent job and very knowledgeable and qualified, and she and I are the two representatives for Dickinson County on that board. I also attended a KAC meeting in Topeka, and I now serve on the board, so I was placed on the board, and will be serving on the finance committee on that particular board, and it is a board that has term limits of two terms, and so Ben Bennett was the individual that I replaced on that board. One of the things, and I probably should have brought this up in the work-study session, the KC is very active as far as legislative policy, and so there will be a teleconference on January seventh with the other board of directors to discuss some of the issues that will be identified, that the KC should be taking a stand on or be visiting with our legislators, and some of the ones that continue to resurface, but if there would be any item, Brad, if you'd let me know, or individually, I think you could let Brad know and get the word to me, because we will have this teleconference before our next meeting. But just a couple of the things, we don't really, aren't directly tied into this, but there's, there will be the discussion about moving the elections, and this isn't KC policy, this is just something that the legislature is going to be discussing, moving some of the elections, the school board officials and the city officials into the fall election cycle. The county commission is already in that particular cycle, so I don't know how directly involved we'll be on that. One of the other issues that has come up, the Reno County Commissioner has talked to his representative to see if proposing the idea that some of the elected officials on the county level be appointed by county commissioners, and I think that it came up before on the Register of Deeds, and there's going to have that discussion on treasure or the clerk, which I don't know if that's, I like the idea of the voters deciding on those positions, but anyway, that's going to come up for a discussion. Knives and guns again, criminal appeals on the court level, and then also the tax appeal process, and then capers, I think, is going to be up there, because that's going to become, you know, some of the funding issues. So those are just a few, but if there are any other items that you would want me to bring up, you know, Brad, if you'll let me know, or if anyone thinks of some of those. The other thing I was wondering about, and this isn't a meeting that I attended, but I noticed that Sling County was going to host the meeting, I think is what we decided last time, we, Dickinson County had started that where we invited some of the surrounding counties, kind of a regional concept, and we were able to discuss some of our issues, and we were at Junction City last time, but it was going to be on a quarterly basis, and probably we should wait till they have their new appointed people over at Sling County.
I talked to Rita Dyster, their administrator, and when we were at KC, and then she emailed me two weeks ago and got the listing of the people that we invited, and her comments were, Dr. Last was able to look at it, middle of January, so their new commission would be seated, and things, the dust kind of settled a little bit for the new year, so I think they've got it on there, you know, it's out in the windshield in front of them, they're just waiting for the right time to do it, so.
And I know it can be rotated, but I would think if the next quarterly meeting, if none of the other counties step forward to volunteer, that we could consider hosting one of the next ones, and it could be that everyone wanted to be in their own cycle, because that includes Sling County, Morris, Dickinson, Clay County, Gary County, was McPherson in on that also?
Clay.
And Marion and Clay, yeah.
We haven't been down to McPherson or Clay yet.
And if they don't feel compelled to host it, I guess that's the part I was just mentioning, I, I think it has some, we're just getting some continuity now, so it'd be helpful if we step forward if they never.
Yeah, I think it's something we need to continue, even if the other, give them the opportunity to kind of, Clay or Ottawa or something doesn't want to do, I, you know, I'd sure as shit drop off.
Well, I think so many good ideas have come from it and been beneficial to the counties that I'd sure like to make sure it continues, because, like I say, we're, they still give us credit for showing the video of the detention center in Junction City that night here, when we had the first one, and Sling County, you know, seen the video and decided that's the direction they wanted to take, and.
And it helped them.
And, yeah, and so.
And helped us too.
They still, like I say, give us credit for that, and then, like I say, some of the other things, the aerial photography thing that we got to share with the counties, and there's other smaller things that just informationalize, that's helped.
Okay, I think the only other thing I'll mention is, earlier, we did have Randy Barton come in on the transfer station and give us an updated report, and also Martin and John were in to discuss some of the bridges, and that's something with the sales tax issue that has passed, that kind of ties right in to some of the ideas we'll be developing and coming up with as far as bridges and roads are concerned, so those discussions are ongoing. Is there anything else to add to the comments? Otherwise, we'll go ahead and move on to, Doug, would you have anything by chance?
No, no, I do not. I need to leave at about twelve twenty to go upstairs for a teleconference call with Judge Sexton and another party, but then I'll come down back after.
At twelve twenty?
Yeah.
Okay, we probably will be done by twelve twenty, I imagine, but we do have the extension, so, okay.
I said twelve twenty, I'm sorry.
Eleven twenty?
Eleven twenty.
Okay, well, maybe you should make your way up there now, you know, so, but anyway, no, thank you, I understand. Brad, if you'd go ahead and give us your report, please.
We have, I think I might have mentioned to you that we had a resignation at EMS, we've now had two people who submitted their resignation, one that is immediately, another one in the middle of December, so we need to lose people that are leaving for other positions, and so, anyway, we went for a long time, I don't know what the correct is, went for a long time with no changes, and now we've got a couple, but we'll begin the process of advertising for those and replacing those, so. We discussed, I'd sent you a message, and we discussed with John and Martin, as Lynn said, in the work session, the closing of a third fracture critical bridge of eleven fifty-five thirteen hundred Avenue, we received word earlier this week from, the inspectors received a report that they had what we called zero weight limit at the bridge, meaning you can't put any weight on to cross it, which essentially closes the bridge. To sum up our discussion in the work session, John was going to go back and contact the inspectors, or maybe look at an independent inspector, look at some options that we may be able to apply to that bridge, or some rehab potentially could get it back up to three or five ton status and milk a little bit more life out of it. We don't know that that's even an option, but we're going to look at it before we completely throw a towel in, but for, right now, the bridge is closed, we have put up barricades for liability purposes, and it's not crossable for right now, but whether it be what it is, and it's wet enough to on the road, they're not going to be using that bridge anyhow, so, or at least it shouldn't be.
Same, we talked about this earlier, Brad, kind of a public meeting with the other two bridges we've got, we want to try to schedule those, and, I mean, tell me when you want to try to schedule them.
Well, we were talking about them after the first of the year.
Right.
Given the limited time we've got now, basically.
Right, yeah.
But I would guess sometime, at least give it thirty days notice, we'd be looking at the end of January, first of February, and do it on a commission meeting day, and just have a public hearing for both of them, probably at the same time on those.
Yeah.
Since they're closed, and a lot of the same people may attend.
Right.
Could utilize the same, the same meeting time for both of them, so I'll get with John, and we'll set something on, probably the first meeting in February or something like that.
Notice to the people who go out, the same one that got notices to the bridge being closed and stuff.
If not a few more, because we didn't send out as many, on a public meeting, we tried to get everybody in a five mile radius, that's a little bit, if, over there, if you did even a three mile radius, you're picking up the north half of Chapman.
Yeah, right.
So, and I didn't elect to do that, and probably won't for that public meeting, but we want to get all the property owners and the people who live in that area.
People who live down the, on the interstate down the Quail Road.
Yeah, yeah, so, but yeah, we'll send them out to, at a minimum, the ones we sent out before, and that would give us enough time that word will spread.
Yeah.
And then we'll also on that send out our telephone message to people, that'll get renters and tenants and anybody else that lives in the area, so, that has a phone. But I would say the first meeting in February would probably be the shits, and that'd give us enough advertising time, and there's not a whole lot going to change between now and then, so, as a matter of fact, my main roots are warm, so.
Yeah.
I'll do the cleaning stuff last, let's see, we did, as Craig mentioned, we, Janelle and I, he met with the mayor and the city manager from Abilene, and also the director of the Chamber of Commerce was there, and yesterday, we just had a very brief meeting or luncheon meeting to talk about economic development and growth in the Abilene community specifically, and what the county and the city can do to initiate some effort there, and that was kind of sparked off a meeting that David had attended at Manhattan and Riley County, and some of the stuff they do, and I found it very interesting, I thought it was very beneficial, that they, you know, are tailoring some of their efforts specific to what they can do in their environment, it's a learning environment, what the college, and so they, you know, in our environment, we've got an agricultural manufacturing community, and we also have some other benefits that we discussed, you know, in the top ten communities in the state for raising a family, and some of the benefits we have, felt like maybe would be beneficial to get together a bigger group of the commissions and meet here in the near future and discuss some of that stuff to help augment some of the efforts that are going on, so. It was very, very preliminary, but I thought it was very beneficial, and we had some really good discussions, also Mike Townsend was there, who's quasi interim director of the Economic Development Corporation, and Dennis Weiss was there with Eagle, President of the Chamber of Commerce, so, had a very good, very good meeting and conversation, very beneficial, so we'll have more to report on that here in the near future. Last week, we had a visit from David Hines, and I'll just kind of briefly tell you that he had received, probably received a citation for allowing his farm animals to be enlarged, in this case, it was hogs, and went back and did some checking with the sheriff's department and dispatch, and it appears that over the last two to three years, we've had about nine calls specific to that particular location with his animals, and that explained in the sheriff's department's justification why there was a citation issue, so. I will, I just got the information yesterday afternoon, I intend to draft a letter to David and explain to him, you know, what I found out, and leave more than welcome to talk to him if he wants to come in and talk to me about it, so.
You might mention to him that our county policy does pretty much follow the state's policy also on that, that we're not.
We're not that aligned or unique by anybody, you know, so, I will. Last week, you had met with some of the personnel from Sterling Hall, and they had provided you a kind of a sheet, I guess if you will, or an update on some issues that they had. Since then, I met with Tim Strunk and Brett Friday morning. A couple of the issues here were, you know, as I said in the meeting, I think, were expressed, and were somewhat of a surprise to me, and hadn't been brought to my attention, but just going through the, if you still got your list, we discussed the lawn care and the snow removal, and at their request, they're going to take care of the lawn care and the snow removal, and, you know, we've been going out, Barnes been going out with one of our big blades, and when the snow was justified and taking the snow off of, removing it from a parking lot, they would, they said they were, they've got several board members and volunteers that have equipment that will be out removing their businesses anyhow, and they know it's a burden for us to take a snow plow off the road and do that, which it absolutely is without a doubt, and our equipment's such, so big that it's difficult to get into a small parking lot, but they're going to take care of those two issues, we're not going to provide that anymore. And then, of course, I updated them again on the entry door and where we're at, and explained to them the process with FEMA, we're still waiting on that. The maintenance issues they had at the bottom, those have all been resolved, they were resolved prior to that meeting for the most part, they just wanted to, in their words, make us aware that those are things that have been going on, but they're going to take care of. The real issue that I wanted to bring up was the janitorial duties, and I also provided you another sheet there that shows what, a breakdown of what we've spent on Sterling Hall in the last three years, and I hope, you know, it's rather noteworthy to see in two thousand and fourteen, we spent a total of twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars on Sterling Hall, and this is not money that was given to Fair Board, this is money that has either come out of the Sterling Hall Fund or out of my budget to support them.
Let me, just going through real quick, Brad, what kind of stuff would be out of the Sterling Hall Fund?
The big ticket items that would come out of the Sterling Hall Fund, of course, were the glass services and the wildcat services on the door.
Right.
And that equated to about twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah.
We also put some sand and rock on their parking lot, things of that nature.
That wouldn't come out of that though, would it?
Well, it did, yeah.
Okay, okay, I didn't.
Whether, it did, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
And then, the fire extinguishers and the annual inspection, we took that out, because that's attached to the building, and a couple of smaller things, the rest of it pretty much come out of my budget.
Okay.
The current balance of that account in the quarter is eighty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-one, but my, my point I wanted to make is we've invested considerable amount of money out there, well above what we've ever done in the past to try and make things work, and my question to Brad and Tim were, well, at what point do you guys start putting back, you know, we're doing what we can to make this a more marketable venue.
Right.
Hopefully, things pick up at some point, you know, their, their list asks for us to invest more money with allowing them, paying them to hire their own custodian, at some point, they ought to be generating more than they can pay for their own.
Yeah.
At least that's been my vision, so.
Well, we would hope they could.
Yeah, because we can't continue to put this kind of money into it, if we're going to be putting that kind of money into it, I would suggest we take it all around ourselves, and that's not what I'm suggesting by that means.
Right, I know, well, and like, I think I try to make it clear that, you know, that I would hope that, you know, with the new policy after, you know, that it would become more self-sufficient.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Yeah.
And I know that's an investment, and we have to wait for that evolution to take place, and I think once the parties start happening and the different functions, like they said, they've got some parties, they've got Pheasants Forever and some of these big events booked now, that have been dreams in the wind before that they couldn't, they were restricted. Hopefully, that, once they get going and people talk, then it'll really kick off and pick up.
Yeah, and what my concern was, I didn't probably convey it well enough, though, that they're making it, so they are making some money, not just covering their expenses.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. And their expenses need to be considered, our expenses need to be considered with their expenses, not just covering their budget, because we're putting an investment in, so I'll be giving this information to Gene and their board, but.
Yeah, I am surprised we put that much money into it.
Yeah, and we've had a lot here in the last, last year or so, and we've done everything we could, of course, that doesn't consider, take any into consideration any staff time on Seth's part.
Right.
And then Chancy spends some time after as well, so, and on their floor cleaning, there's another bill for about five thousand that's not in here.
Yeah.
And it wasn't, it didn't come up on the report, because I think they paid it, and we reimbursed the Fair Board, and we didn't have time this morning to pull that out.
Okay.
We'll work with them, I think we've been stellar in what we've done so far.
Well, I know it's good to see that they're going to be, you know, the Fair Board is going to be, you know, stripping themselves, and, you know, gives ownership into it.
Absolutely. The real issue I wanted to discuss a little bit today has to do with custodial services, and historically, about three years ago, at one time, four or five years ago, we actually had, we had four maintenance custodial people there, we had dropped one off, one had left us for whatever reason, so we eliminated one through attrition, and at some point in time, we determined that it would be more efficient to contract out the some of the custodial services here at the courthouse and the health department than it was to have those other two people in full-time positions. Long story short, we bought back down to one custodian or maintenance person, he's more of a maintenance person, does some like custodial stuff during the day, but we started contracting with local cleaning service, and at that time, we were, we were paying about twenty-four thousand a year as opposed to two other full-time positions. We slowly added on extra duties to that position with the South Annex and the Mariner Services, and Sterling Hall's a big one, where we're doing that, that cleaning and those things, to where now, we're paying, as this year, we paid fifty-four thousand dollars to that cleaning service. Chancy and I met, he brought it to my attention, and we met, we feel like it would be much more efficient for us to revert back and not contract and hire one full-time position. I'd give you kind of a breakdown there and your handout of what the salary and benefits would be for a full-time position at that, at the rate and duties. We could save right off the bat, totally inclusive, about eleven thousand dollars, and we would have a person available forty hours a week to do all that and help with other duties, and I don't think it would take quite forty hours a week, but having them here and doing it, I think would be a better fit for us at this point. I don't like the idea of adding employees, I'll say that upfront, but in this case, I think it's more economical for us to look at that option, we're just, we're just, we're paying a lot for the other services, and we're not, we don't have the total control that we'd like to have to get the call we're done with, we'd like, I guess is how I would sum that up, so.
Transportation-wise, is there a vehicle that they would have available that they would use for short trips out to Sterling Hall?
That was actually my question with Chancy, and we do have the little Ford Ranger pickup that Seth uses now, both Seth and Chancy, neither one saw a need for an additional vehicle, but I like the one we have, that's already equipped to the toolboxes and tools and stuff to haul, what Seth does is more than sufficient.
They just coordinate that.
Yeah, they just work together for that, so.
Cooper plane.
Because a lot of what he's using that vehicle for now, the other person, they wouldn't both be using it at the same time, so.
The supplies and stuff, we provide those to Cooper plane or let me and Doc?
No, we're already providing those.
All right, okay, so it's not.
There's really no other expenses considered to consider.
It's just labor cost.
Just the labor cost, exactly, so, we're already providing the supplies, we're already providing all the other ancillary expenses, Seth purchases all those and keeps them stocked up, so that person comes in and has it to refill and work with, so, there's really no other benefits that we'd have to worry about, you know, other than the salary with the employee and all their, their benefits that we detailed out to go along with it, so.
And we have enough in our budget already, because.
We're already paying that plus some, absolutely.
So we actually, net effect, we might actually save a little bit on the budget.
It just comes down to whether you feel like that one full-time person is, is going to be able to do everything that needs to be done as far as cleaning.
I think it will, we're sure that it will, because we don't, we know the hours that the contractor's putting in now, and they're not putting in. and they're not putting in equivalent of 40 hours to do what they're doing, so.
Then how are we going to, the other subject, Stirl Hall, and they'll be cleaning that as needed to them?
They would have a regular regiment of cleaning out there. We would have somebody, again, it would be easier for us to coordinate because we have somebody on staff to do that. We wouldn't have to rely on a second-party vendor to do that. So that's been probably the biggest issue we've had out there, is satisfying them and doing our quality job.
Talked to Tim and Brad about.
About this option, yes, I did.
And they're comfortable going with that option?
They're comfortable going with that, doing a shot. We'd be much more accountable with what we're providing, so.
Would this person, well, I'm kind of looking at it, you know, like on a weekend, if they had something out there, how is this person going to be able to spend some weekend hours and still stay under 40 hours?
Well, they'd either, one of two things, they'd either take cop time during the week or the schedule would be split or we may just have a few overtime hours on the salon. Overtime's not necessarily a bad thing if it's managed. It's a lot cheaper than hiring additional people or benefits, but if you manage it and they know they've got something scheduled for next weekend, most people would prefer to have some flexibility this time of year to go Christmas shopping or whatever, take three or four hours off, make up for what they're going to work on Saturday. And it's just management of the time, so. Where we have two people working, Seth would be here to cover or vice versa, it would be much easier to do, so.
Well, it'd be like any kind of situation out there, like say you'd have a sale this Saturday, you know, the Fair Board responsible, you know, whoever has it's responsible.
Break it down and take, put it together.
Back up and stuff, sweep in the floor. But the only thing it'd be.
It'd be bathroom cleaning and that type of.
Toilet paper cleaning.
But that could be wait till Monday because they have a time.
On that rare occasion where you may have something on Friday that goes over to Saturday, or Saturday that goes over to Sunday where you need to go stock the toiletries and clean the kitchen and what have you. Make sure that even though the renter may have cleaned it, it may not be cleaned to the standard we want for the next renter. But those are just, those are just hurdles we just have to jump through. And if you have a couple hours overtime to do that, to me, that's much easier to deal with $20 or $30 expense than that overtime as opposed to not get, get the job done.
And at the Fair, Stirl Hall, who will they be answering to? Will they be?
They'll be answering to Chancey.
Okay, so, I mean, in other words, back to now, Brenda?
Gene.
Gene, she won't be responsible for telling her what they want done. She'll have to go through Chancey.
Yeah, it'll be a standard setting.
I don't want, you know, trying to keep.
No, it'll be our employee and they'll answer to Chancey, so.
I mean, if she has something she needs, I mean, we need to have that perfectly clear, in my opinion, that they're working for us, you know, you know, and that can be worked out as overtime.
It'd be no different than it is now with Seth. If she has something she needs, she can communicate with Seth.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And we've got the process set up, just like with our buildings. We've got an email, a tab on our website, and if they have an issue or something, they go to it and it automatically goes to about three people's email and it comes up and they know they have a service call essentially to go take care of. And they can communicate directly with you. If it's something that's out of the ordinary, but for her to say, you need to drop what else you're doing, come out and take care of this, that doesn't happen.
That's what I was trying to.
That's where she would communicate with Chancey and then we'd make sure it gets taken care of. Because it may not be that person that's available, it might be Seth or whoever, so.
What, do we have a contract now that we're going to have to?
We do, and it terminates the end of the year.
At the end of the year?
We would just, we would just notify Cooper that we're no longer going to need their services, so. And we may need them another 30 days until we get somebody hired or, you know. And they've been very good to work with. I don't mean to shed a negative light on Cooper Clean. They've done a super job for what we've been able to ask them to do. It's just, we just have more to do than I think they're able to provide, so.
We need a motion to?
I would like to have approval to add that position back into the, into the work.
And terminate this Cooper contract?
If I could go ahead and do that this time, I think, if you, since we had the discussion, if someone wants to make a motion on that.
Yeah, I move that we give Brad authorization to hire a person to do cleaning and maintenance, whatever, and give the authority to terminate the contract with Cooper Clean when, when the time comes that we need to have that.
Second.
Okay, so we have the motion and the second that we do authorize Brad to go ahead and have this new position for maintenance and that since the contract for Cooper Clean's expiring, that we can negotiate with them on the transition between hiring someone new. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll go ahead and go to our notices and.
I have one of them that I just wanted to, if I could.
No, yes.
I did have it on my list. I added it because I, I did, this is on a little bit lighter note, but I did get a message this morning on my way into the meeting from an employee that works out at Savely Machine that wanted to thank us for the 18-inch safety edge with the snowfall today. She said it was much easier to maneuver and manage driving in even though the roads weren't snow-covered, but she felt like it was much safer at 6 o'clock this morning driving to work to see where she was going and didn't feel like in the snowfall she was driving head-on into other vehicles. Just wanted to make that, that comment, thought it was, again, very effective and well worth it, so.
Good improvement.
Absolutely. That's all I've got.
Okay, very good. I had a couple of pamphlets here from Enterprise Products and addressed to the County Commission or furnished business addresses. And so we have that for our review. And of course, our department heads receive, you know, a lot of this information, so as they need something specific for their particular part, they're able to take care of that. I also have a, this was a certified mail letter from the Kansas Development Finance Authority and is just telling about the provisions of the Internal Revenue Code authorizing a beginning former program. And this has to do with the Kansas Development Finance Authority, known as KDFA, and the Agricultural Development Revenue Bond. And they reference a particular project number 000911, so I'll give that to Brad so he has that for his record. We also received notice from Warner, Glenn, Reader, and Gerard. They're attorneys out of Topeka. And it's just in the matter of the District Court of Dixon County, Kansas. And this has to do with a foreclosure, from what I can tell. And it's Astro Bank is the plaintiff and defendants are Wayne Oakman and Leona K. Oakman. It also mentions the Board of County Commissioners of Dixon County. And this is something procedural since it involves the taxation of that particular property that we're notified of this particular piece from the, from the attorneys. And this would probably precede the court. We have a notice from, this has to do with internet service if we would want to change. Also have a billing from the Kansas Association of Counties, and this is for Dixon County. And the amount is $4,369.47. And what they've done in essence is they've increased, it's based on population, but they have increased the dues by 1%, which seems reasonable, and so I'll give that to Brad so he can process that for our next billing cycle. We have from the North Central Kansas Regional Planning Commission and just received a Christmas card from them and wishing us a joyous season and a healthy and happy New Year. We also have one from CFS Engineers. And they also provided us with a tray of some candies that we were able to participate in. And I guess, well, Craig, you took that into the other office to.
Get it out of my sight.
Share the calories with other people in the county. Okay, we also have a Christmas card from Judge Michael Powers and family. Of course, he's our judge with the Eighth Judicial District. We have another Christmas card from K Camp. So is that the tradition you put back there?
Yeah, we put them up there.
Okay. This is a save the date for the 87th Annual Chamber Banquet. And so if you'd get that entered on our calendar, it looks like it's going to be February 26th. And this is for, for the Abilene Area Chamber. And if we do want to nominate anyone for quiet hero, volunteer, distinguished citizen, distinguished businessperson or ag business as a chamber member, we can do that. And otherwise, if it's an evening event, starts at 6 o'clock, it's going to be at the Eisenhower Presidential Library. And that's something that we will need to RSVP, but we do have time on that.
What is the date?
February 26th. We have another certified mailing, and this is, this is from Stevens and Brand, Attorneys of Law. And this has to do with Westar Energy is the plaintiff and defendant is Gary Burkholder. And it is also showing that he is deceased. And there probably are some people that are either part of a trust or heirs of that estate, but that's something that Westar is just notifying us. And I think this has to do, it's an eminent no main case. We also have a commercial carrier journal and it has a, telling us how we can get a no-frill fleet if we need one. We've done a pretty good job of this, so.
Yeah, don't mess with her, man.
I believe that's all, oh, I do have also a letter from Faith Sum. And she's just copied us in, long representatives and so on. And I think just mentioning that she's making a payment under protest. I think one of the issues that she brought up is that the check saved payable to Leah Hearn, and that's something that is, I guess, that's something, I mean, obviously, it still goes to Dixon County Treasurer's Office and your property taxes are paid for when you send that to her, but.
I did talk to Leah in the hallway since we talked about that this morning. She had already taken steps to contact the postal precinct people and get that changed. It wasn't supposed to be that way. It's supposed to say, you know, make payable to Dixon County Treasurer. And she says some of the other counties do it that way, but that's, it's never been that way for her before and she wasn't comfortable leaving it that way either, so next time around it'll be changed, so.
Okay, and I just, you know, it comes out the same and it's very clear as far as what the purpose of the payment is and its receipt, but.
But she don't.
But if that clarifies it, that's, and that's kind of her office to decide how to do that. Okay, I did notice, and I should have put this on the additional agenda, we do not have any resolutions or unfinished business. One of the things that we added was to authorize a commissioner to come in and sign documents. And I think what the issue was on that, if it is needed for payroll, we will not be meeting on, on Christmas Day or January 1st. And so this is, will be our last meeting until after the 1st of the year unless a special meeting would be called for some reason. And, you know, Brad can advise us if that ever happens, if it's an emergency situation. But we need to authorize a commissioner to come in and sign documents if it's for serial licensing or just any housekeeping or payroll. And in kind of our discussion in the work-study session, since I live right here in town, probably what the protocol would be is that they would call me first if I'm available. But if I happen to be out of town or not available, then Barb could notify one of the other of you two to, to come in. So anyway, we just need a motion to go ahead and have that authorization.
So move.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have the motion and the second to authorize that I would come in and sign any needed documents. And otherwise, if not available, one of the other commissioners would be called. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The other thing is, and Brad did have this on the agenda to review and consider, the indigenous defense contracts? And is that, that's just a renewal?
That's a renewal, the same contract Doug has negotiated that with the four local attorneys that give the, the defense work at the same price as last year, so. And then we've got a fifth one, which is Alan Anx, that catches a day in the slack where some of them may have a conflict in case it happens, so.
What's maybe the frequency of that, or is there any?
Every year.
Rule of thumb, though, I mean, as far as that we have someone take care of that?
Can't, you can't tell on the conflicts, sometimes there can be three a month, sometimes there won't be any for a month or two. It simply depends. The judge has the option of assigning somebody off of that pool, those four attorneys. But if all four had a conflict, then the judge would go to the conflict. And if Mr. Anx has a conflict with it, then I picked up those, those cases where there's a conflict that everybody has, then I'll come in. So far, we haven't had one that's included more than six attorneys.
Okay, and the attorneys we have here is Gene Parrish, Jocelyn Lucas-Randall, Mitch Christians, and Jeffrey Evil.
That's correct.
So is there a motion to go ahead and authorize signing of this contract?
I'll move that we sign this contract for the, with these lawyers that I mentioned.
Okay, and I'll second that. So we have the motion, the second, to go ahead and enter this agreement for indigenous defense services. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, we'll go into executive session for non-elected personnel. And is 10 minutes adequate on that, or do you want 15, or?
Let's go 15.
Okay, and this is for non-elected personnel and would include?
It'll be just as straightforward as we began with.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's why I'd rather do it.
Okay.
Could, could, I've got one other issue outside of the evaluation that might take just a couple minutes.
Before we go into that, okay.
If we have that eye in for that, then he and I can step out.
Well, let's make it 15 minutes, or 20 minutes then.
If you start with us and we can step out.
Oh, okay.
And Doug can go on because he didn't extend.
Move we go into executive session for non-elected personnel and attorney flag reasons at 11:52 and for 20 minutes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second that we enter executive session for 20 minutes. The first five minutes of it would include our county administrator and county attorney. And it's for a discussion of non-elected personnel. And it would be 20 minutes for the total duration. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll now go into executive session. Have a Merry Christmas.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Actually, we have to make the motion to go back to regular session. And then there's...
You did that, I did that.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, Lynn, regular session.
Return to regular session and then...
And who seconded it?
I'll second that one.
Okay.
Unanimous.
Unanimous.
And all in favor say aye, aye.
Okay.
And then there's a motion...
And I'm making a motion to go back into executive session for non-elected personnel for 10 minutes.
Who seconded?
I will.
Okay.
And includes commissioners and Brand.
And to executive session.
And you're back out to your office again.
I need, I need a...
Copies?
Yeah, I need about 20. That's the last one I have.
Twenty. Hey.